The August 14, 2017 Regular Business Meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Yes, sir, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance, there's a sign-up sheet in the back for public comment and for citizens' comments also. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is our motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Does that move? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Number three is matters from City Council. Does anybody have anything they wish to present tonight?
I'm glad to be back.
We're glad to have you back.
I don't.
All right. Item four is to hold a public hearing to receive comment and consider introducing an ordinance admitting the preliminary subdivision plat for a 67-lot residential subdivision on a 30.847 tract at 6001 Ivy Street, previously approved in February 2004, request by Rata Bush Gale and Associates Inc., agents for Claybrook Associates LLC owner, Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen, members of council. Council's first responsibility this evening will be to formally receive the report and recommendation from the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission considered this matter at their July 18, 2017 meeting and send the following resolution, Waynesboro Planning Commission, by a vote of six zero, forward that a recommendation to the City Council that the request of Rata Bush Gale and Associates Inc. for Claybrook Associates LLC owner for preliminary subdivision plat entitled Claybrook Phase Two Major Subdivision Plat be approved with a waiver from the minimum road pavement width and right-of-way width requirements of the City Code Chapter 74, Section 74-62A, and a waiver for a private sewer system from the City Code Chapter 74, Section 74-82A in accordance with the application MJR number 17-244, the staff report dated July 18, 2017, and with the following conditions: One, final plats and associated deeds in the form acceptable to the city attorney shall ensure the dedication of the greenway to the city, and such deeds shall be recorded in the City of Waynesboro Circuit Court. And number two, no final plat shall be approved until the road connection to Evershire from Cross Keys, excuse me, from Cross Keys Way is constructed.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Hamp, right now. If not, is there a motion to receive the recommendation of the Planning Commission? Does that move? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Are there any questions or discussion on receiving the report? If not, on favor of receiving the report and recommendations of the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Mr. Judee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Planning Commission considered this application at its most recent, at its most recent meeting. Claybrook is a large, or was originally planned to be a fairly large subdivision off of 254 as you head out of the city heading north. If you are going that direction out into the county, you know Annemarie Estates is on your left, Claybrook is on your right. The subdivision was originally platted before the recession hit during a time when we had quite a few subdivisions that were coming in. It was platted for fairly large lots and quite a few really nice homes in that area. During the recession, the developer fortunately went bankrupt and wasn't able to complete the project, and it ended up in the hands of the current applicant, Rata Bush Gale and Associates, represented by Mr. Bill Ledbetter here today. And they, also the zoning changed during that time. We originally had a zoning designation in this area which required a minimum 15,000 square foot lots. We now have, our zoning in that area now requires a minimum 12,000 square foot lots, which is our largest lot minimum. This is the location of the property. This is Ivy Street up here. As you can see, a section of Claybrook was completed. There's 32 of the originally platted lots, originally there were supposed to be 86 lots within the subdivision, 32 were completed. One was not used, it was taken for public infrastructure, and so there's 31 completed lots in that area. As you can see, it's just to the north of the Evershire subdivision, and there are platted connections here. So that was phase one. Phase two, you can see is originally platted, is this area, this 30 acres and 67 lots that the developer is now coming in wanting to read, to revise. Here's the originally approved plat. Again, this section here is what's been built. This section of greenway right here was constructed by the developer in lieu of sidewalks over a lot of the development, and it will hopefully form part of our North Town Trail eventually, which should stretch from the South River west to the railroad tracks there. The greenway was never formally dedicated to the city, and as a condition of acceptance of the revision, we were asking the developer, and he's agreed to dedicate this to the city so that we can maintain it clearly. Here's the proposed new plat. The driving consideration in revising the plat is that the developer wants to reduce the minimum lot size, wants to take advantage of the change in the zoning designation, and as a result of that, he'll be able to fit in about 12, or he will be able to fit in 12 new lots. We've gone back and forth, we had quite a few meetings with the Neighborhood Association and the developer, quite a few of the folks in the Homeowners Association are here tonight to represent the Homeowners Association, they've been excellent to work with so far, as has Mr. Ledbetter. It's kind of an unfortunate situation for everyone, and during the Planning Commission hearing, all sides had quite a bit to say. It's a complicated issue. It's unfortunate in the sense that you have a lot of homeowners here today who bought into this neighborhood in the expectation that a certain kind of home, a certain kind of lot, would be constructed there. They're looking at that original plat. As it turns out, now we have the developer coming back and wanting smaller lots in the back section of that, so they're, you know, that's an expectation that they had when they purchased the house that's not going to be fulfilled. On the other end, you have the developer who did not, you know, obviously originally hoped to build the entire subdivision, but ran aground of that during the recession, and is also up against a more difficult market in the city today where the larger homes aren't moving as quickly, and so they're wanting to plat as many homes as they can in this section. Working with them, we believe we've gotten a few, we've also added a new road connection on the eastern side, which we think will improve connectivity, though that area is not likely to be built out for quite some time. But this road connection to Evershire down here on the west side, we have asked that it be completed with the, with the completion of any new lots right off the bat. And that's a fire and connectivity issue that engineering and fire both, and planning are all very interested in having, and we don't expect a significant amount of traffic from the Evershire development because most of the traffic in this area is flowing south to Hopeman, and because there will very soon be a new road connection right here from Evershire to 154. But we're trying to avoid there being one way in and out of these larger subdivisions. Quite a bit of green space was constructed by the developer in the initial phase. There's a little bit of green space that'll be added in the new section, mostly for public infrastructure purposes, and as well the center of this circle here, which was originally going to have lots in it. And as I mentioned, the issue about the greenway, the greenway will be dedicated to the city. So a couple of things that have changed that require waivers, and this is why you're being asked to consider the waivers today. Sorry, that's all copied. The, the two big waivers are for the street width and for the sewer. I'm sorry, I forgot about this slide, so I'll get to those in a second. So the big amendment is just we're reducing the minimum lot size from 15,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet, the same as the zoning minimum, and so they're, be able to do this by right under our current zoning. This gives them 12 additional lots. It'll increase the density of phase two from 1.46 units per acre to 1.64 units per acre, with phase two itself being 2.2 units per acre. They'll also be reducing the street pavement width from 36 to 24 feet. As you all recall, I gave a presentation on the new subdivision ordinance updates last, last meeting. We've been talking to these new developers, and they're very eager to use the new subdivision ordinance requirements. They've been very eager to, and supportive of our subdivision ordinance revision, but we didn't want to hold them up on this and tell them to wait until after the subdivision ordinance was passed. And so what we've done is we've asked them to design the streets in conformance with the new subdivision ordinance, hoping that it will get passed, and if not, we've, they've formally, and since they will, this will not be approved technically before the subdivision ordinance is enacted, they've had to ask for a waiver. So the street waiver is just about the, coming into conformance with the new subdivision ordinance. And then reduce the public right-of-way width from 60 feet to 50 feet, which again is in conformance with our new subdivision ordinance. We've got an additional interparcels connection to the Evershire subdivision to the south on the east side of the development. Again, that's a request from staff. And then sidewalks on both sides of the street, whereas in the previous section of the development, they had had their sidewalks waived. And then also they're asking to have the 18 lots on the east side of the development served with a private sewer system that I'll explain in a minute. So here's the two waiver requests. As I mentioned, the street width waiver is about the timing of the subdivision ordinance. They're looking at our revision process and saying, should we use the old requirements or should we use the new requirements? And we would prefer, and they would prefer, to use the new requirements, but we weren't sure that those would be enacted in time, and so they're asking to use the new requirements on the assumption, and from what indications we've received, that council's largely in favor of them, and ask for a waiver in the meantime. The sewer waiver is a little more complicated, and I'll explain that. So there's 18 lots that will be served by the sewer waiver, and those are on the east side of the development here. If you look at the topography in this area, there's something of a ridge line here, so you have a slope upwards going this direction and then downwards going this direction. This area here, coming up Ivy, is served by city sewer mains. So you have a situation kind of like this. You have all your houses, and you have your ridge line and your city sewer main down here. And what you would generally build is a gravity sewer system where the houses would feed into the city, the city main here. But there's no city main on the east side for that gravity system to feed into, which leaves you a couple of options. One unrealistic option is you can dig unnecessarily deep and create a difficult situation for us to maintain, and a more expensive situation for them to construct. The more common solution would be to build a pump station on the east side there, and that is like, you know, building an entire new structure, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars that they would have to construct, and then, that would then become a facility that we, as the city, would have to maintain at our own expense in the future. And Public Works has indicated to us that they're not interested in maintaining that, developer's not interested in building it, and we feel that this represents a significant enough hardship that it warrants a waiver. And so the waiver that we've negotiated between Public Works and the developer is this. They'll build, go ahead and build the gravity main as you would expect it to be in the future, but mothball it, and in the meantime, install E1 grinder pumps in each individual house that will pump the sewage up through a force main line up to the main gravity sewer line. Basically what this will do is each homeowner will have to individually maintain their grinder pump, and the 18 homes that are served by the grinder pumps will have to maintain the force main through a sub-association. And then at whatever point the eastern part, you know, the areas of the city to the east of this development are developed and receive city sewer service, at that point, the E1 grinder pumps will be decommissioned, and the houses can connect directly to the, to the mothballed gravity line. So the staff recommendations were that the, that you approve the preliminary subdivision plat revision with the following conditions, which were read out already, and the Planning Commission voted to approve this on a six oh vote. We have quite a few representatives of the Homeowners Association, as well as the developer here tonight, will be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Judee?
The zoning designation of the minimum lot size, that was completed in 2010?
I believe so. 2009 was the zoning ordinance, passively?
That's about right, yes.
So that's where it dropped from, for the RS 12, from a 15,000 square foot minimum to a 12,000 square foot minimum?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
If the, if the developer were to, to vacate the, the current platted site, they could come in with a 12,000 square foot minimum lot size?
Correct, yeah.
Off the bat, without, with the exception of the waivers that we've discussed tonight, be able to build by right?
A preliminary subdivision plat is functionally, or preliminary subdivision plat revision is functionally a new preliminary plat. It's the same process, yeah.
Right.
You're correct. If they vacated it and came in with a new one, it would be?
Would be a 12,000's by right development.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So we're not required to rezone because?
There's no rezoning involved, yeah.
This change from 15 to 12 was?
Right.
It's still the same zone?
It's still the same zone, right. There's no, this is a by right development, but it's, it's just a subdivision amendment.
And when we talk about the smaller street size, that's the program you give to us at the last?
That's what I was talking to you all about last time, yeah.
And we talked also, you know, about the emergency vehicles. Mr. Freeman brought up questions about, you know, the narrow, but that's all complies with VDOT standards now.
Correct, yeah. So they will be building VDOT standard roads, and we'll be getting sidewalks now where we didn't in the original development. And fire is also happy to see that the connection will be made, so they'll have an additional in and out, which has been their main concern with this development.
Any other questions of Mr. Judee? Thank you, sir. All right, and I'll hear, I'll open up the public hearing.
So our practice is to allow the applicant an opportunity to address the council first if they have comments to add to the staff report. If not, we'll proceed to the?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilpeople, Bill Ledbetter, represent Rata Bush Gale and Claybrook. I have no comments. Mr. Judee pretty much nailed the points to it. I'm just asking for a by right subdivision to work within the zoning ordinances that you guys have passed. I think it's pretty clear cut, but I'm here to certainly answer any questions you would have, or if you need any further explanation, anything. I'm here for you.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Ledbetter?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chip Yates?
Mr. Yates, if you'll give us your name and your address, please, sir. And we have a timer up here also, that if you pay attention to widescreen, you can talk when it gets down to yellow. Please start finishing up.
Yes, my name is Chip Yates. I live at 224 Claybrook Drive. I currently serve as president of the Claybrook Owners Association. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My wife Susan and I have lived at 224 Claybrook Drive since early 2011. Those of us who have lived in Claybrook since 2011 or earlier have had a fair amount of experience with Claybrook's developer, Claybrook Associates LLC. My remarks tonight will focus first on our experience with the developer, and then on the Claybrook Phase Two resuminal. Speaking for myself only, I do not have great confidence in the developer. When Claybrook Associates separated itself from Claybrook Phase One in 2011, it passed the management and architectural control of the, to the homeowners, together with $1,249 in a checking account, an improper entrance sign, and the impression that even though the Owners Association did not own the eight acres of common area, which we actually thought for years that we did, and despite language in the homeowners association's governing documents prepared by the developer's attorney that suggest otherwise, the association would have to pay, excuse me, all future expenses associated with the maintenance and insurance of the common area. Note, we have paid all common area related bills since control passed in 2011. As to Claybrook's non-conforming entrance sign, we were shocked when in 2015, the city told us that the entrance sign to Claybrook had been built in a right-of-way without the required permit, and that the association would be at risk if anyone ran into it, which someone did, since our liability insurance provider could disavow coverage because if the sign was illegal or improper. Out of an abundance of caution, our board voted to dismantle the sign, which we promptly did at a cost of approximately $5,400. I believe that as the developer of Phase One, Claybrook Associates was responsible for failing to secure permission from the city to build the sign where and when they did. The common area issue, the improper entrance sign, and the general manner in which the developer managed Claybrook and the Owners Association prior to leaving, and the way in which he has dealt with us since we learned quite by accident of his current plans, all leave me very concerned about his return to Claybrook. Here's what I believe and what I don't believe. I don't believe that Claybrook Associates cares one iota about the impact of its new proposal on Phase One owners. I do believe that its current plan was substantially smaller lots, much greater density than originally approved in 2004, that's from 53 to 67 lots, which is a 26% increase. Much narrower roads, reduced setbacks, and absolutely zero transition between the original and the new sections will, if approved, create an environment totally imharmonious and incompatible with Phase One. It will be like two completely different subdivisions joined at the hip. If this plan is approved, it will betray the understanding that Claybrook purchasers from 2006 until just a few months ago had that future development would be the same as or similar to that shown on the 2004 preliminary subdivision plat approved by City Council. The Claybrook Owners Association Board enthusiastically supports City Council's original 2004 preliminary subdivision plat approval, which calls for a continuation of the lot size and neighborhood character from Phase One through Phase Two. We do not support the current resuminal due to the considerable negative impact it is likely to have on property values in Phase One. I respectfully ask that, at the very least, City Council defer a final decision tonight to allow time for further consideration, during which time a professional assessment of the plan's impact on Phase One owners can be obtained.
Sir?
Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dave Sheldon, followed by Mr. Marty Rowe.
If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is David Sheldon. I live at 225 Claybrook Drive. I'm here this evening with my wife, Terri. I am currently the association secretary and have been past president for a couple of years. I am here to also ask the council to delay vote this evening on the forthcoming decision on the plat. Little background going forward, I'm one of the original homeowners of the subdivision back from August of 2007. Shortly after we closed on our house, our builder defaulted, went out of business, hence some warranty issues going forward there. Few years later, as you heard from Mr. Yates, we had the new HOA responsibilities dumped on us without much choice in that particular matter. A little while later, a number of additional lots went bust and had to be sold at auction. And now this spring, we find out we've got a major change coming as far as the new plots and development. Most of the folks have no plans or no problems with the Phase Two coming. We're not that concerned about smaller lot sizes as we are the size of the reduction from 100-foot frontage to 75-foot frontage, a 20% drop in overall lot size, street shortages of about 12 feet. And to date, no one in this room that I know of knows who the builder is going to be, the size, and the type of the homes, or the price range. Mr. Ledbetter was kind enough to share some information with us when we had preliminary meetings about him having a conversation with NVR, who is the parent company of Ryan Homes, but at this point in time, that's really about all the information we know going forward. So with that being in mind, what I'm here to ask again for the City Council is that you delay the vote on this until at least such time the City Council and the members of Claybrook Phase One know at least some idea who the builder or builders might be, the type, style of homes that may be going in that subdivision, and at least some idea of the price range going forward. Otherwise, I think it's a risky venture to make a vote without knowing that kind of information. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Marty Rowe, or Ms. Marty, I apologize.
Thank you. You'll give us your name and your address, please.
Okay, well, I am Mrs. Marty Rowe, and my address is 216 Claybrook Drive. In January of 2017, my personal goal was to move to Waynesboro, and I've been pleased with that decision and with our location. I love the Claybrook community. In the real estate search and in the decision to make an offer on my present home, I knew there was a plan for further development in the neighborhood, but with an understanding that the expansion was to continue with the established plan. Minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, restriction of single-family detached homes, road width consistent with the already established community, which is 36 feet, a city right-of-way of 60 feet, and a setback at 40 feet per lot. When I attended the Planning Commission meeting on July 18th, I listened to the developer's proposal for further development and the changes he requested. I am concerned of the potential consequences his proposal would have on our property value, hence the handout. As you can see from the first page of the handout, Phase One Plan approved in 2004, that was the information given to me in March when I purchased the home. The areas outlined in green are the Phase One lots, and the other areas show the Phase Two, the future development lots. This 2004 approved plan depicts a neighborhood of uniformity. It's a harmonious and consistent neighborhood plan. Now look at the second sheet, the current proposal that we are discussing this evening, and note the areas outlined in pink. Pay close attention to this lots, 54 through 62. The drastic reduction in lot size will dictate the type and size home to be built. The developer has asked to develop Phase Two with changes in the lot size from a minimum of 15,000 to a minimum of 12,000 square feet, with reductions in the road width from 36 to 24 feet, a right-of-way footage from 60 to 50 feet, and the setback footage from 40 to 30 feet. It is for this reason that I'm asking for you, the members of council. Thank you. I just wanted you to digest what?
I'm listening.
The difference is, correct, thank you. But it is for this reason that I ask for you to seriously consider the following before voting for the changes that were proposed by the developer and recommended by the Planning Commission. To provide consistency and preserve the beauty of our already established community, I request that further development adhere to the original plans, which is minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet, continue with the restriction of single-family detached homes, and keep the road width consistent with what we have. As council members, members who have an obligation to protect the rights of our citizens, please help our property values continue to grow and maintain the overall look of our Claybrook community by voting for the original development plan to remain, or table a decision until further studies of long-term consequences of the developer's proposal can be researched. It is important to note there are two issues in play, the reduction of minimum lot size by 20% and the narrowing of the streets. I extend a personal invitation to each of you to come visit me. I would like to walk with you.
I'm going to have to extend the rules of our timer, and you're going to have to be finished.
Well, you are invited to come to my house. I will walk with you through the neighborhood, I will feed you dinner, but I would like for you to see our beautiful community as it is, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Garrett Fitzgerald, followed by William Elliott.
If you'll give us your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. I am Garrett Fitzgerald. I live at 134 Claybrook Drive. I will not belabor the items that I wanted to mention because they have been mentioned already, but I'll just touch on the fact that this decision, we feel, and I think that you would, will see by the attendance of the numbers of our neighborhood, that we feel this would be a definite? this would be a definite negative, take a definite negative effect on our neighborhood to reduce the lot size as proposed. Also, as Ms. Rowe mentioned, we purchased our homes with the understanding that the neighborhood would continue as it was planned, and now that has gone awry. I'll ask you to also to consider the tax revenues, though there are, there would be more lots but of smaller size and homes of much smaller size. I believe with a larger home and larger lot, our tax revenues for the city would probably equal out to be about the same, if not better. And like Ms. Rowe, I would like to invite you to our neighborhood to visit, see how beautiful it is, and how we would like to preserve that, and what a drastic difference that this proposal would take on our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
William Elliott.
Mr. Elliott, if you'll give us your name and your address, please.
My name is William Elliott. I live at 216 Claybrook. I would like to echo what has been said, but just to follow up on the two issues, I heard somebody talking about if the property were vacated and it would come back, it would fall under the 12,000-foot zoning. And I think that's true, but the double whammy, if you will, is the narrowing of the streets. And they're asking for a variance on something that really hasn't been approved yet, something that I didn't know about until the last meeting in July that was even on the table about the narrowing of the streets. The street width coupled with the narrowing of the, or the shortening of the right-of-way really puts the rest of this subdivision, the houses, much closer together, both on the sides and in the front. And it makes a significant difference in the look and the feel. You have smaller homes, more cars, and then more cars that, in homes that could possibly not have garages so that more cars are possibly on the street, and then narrower streets. You also want to have sidewalks, which it will change the whole feel of the neighborhood. And all those things really just came to light subsequent to the planning commission meeting. I mean, it's hard to digest everything all at once, but the narrowing of the streets is a big part of this, and they're asking for a variance in something that hasn't even been approved. And I feel like if the city does go forward to that, they ought to have some consideration for any plats that have already been approved or anything that's already hanging out there like this subdivision, because it will impact very much what's already in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Mr. Hamp?
No, sir. And is there a practice to allow the applicant to respond to the council if they have any questions or respond to comments? A rebuttal comment?
I have nothing unless you have a question.
Okay.
If you'd come up to the...
Yes, sir.
My question would be, do you know now the difference in the square footage of the homes being built?
I do not, and he did mention NVR is the people that approached me about buying this subdivision. But until I have a project going forward, I mean, I have not met with the people since our initial thing. So until I have plans to go forward, I mean, there's nothing I can sell them or show them. So I do not know. I do think there will be smaller homes. I mean, I'm not going to deceive anybody. I mean, there's smaller lots. I assume the homes will be smaller as well. I do think they'll be larger than Evershire because the lots there are 50% smaller than what these 12,000-square-foot lots are. So these lots are, you know, a transitional size between Evershire to the 15,000 Claybrook original lots at 12,000. But I do think there will be smaller homes. But I don't have plans. I don't have any firm commitment from anybody.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
So apartments would not be...
No, no. Everything here is a single family. There's absolutely no attached products proposed. I don't even think they're allowed by the zoning. So, I mean, the one thing I will address for the smaller lot size, I mean, council, when you revise your zoning ordinance, this is what the city council and the city asks for. This is the largest lot subdivision in the city today, it's a 12,000-square-foot lot. So these are not little tiny lots for the city. I mean, we are an urban city. These are the largest lots that you guys have. So it's the vision that somebody at council, when you did your last zoning ordinance. And I mean, I'm not here asking for any consideration or changes to your zoning. I want to work what you have presented as being your vision for Waynesboro. Same with the reduced street width. I mean, when I met with Mr. Jude originally in this process, he told me you were undergoing a ordinance change to get in line with VDOT ordinances for street widths. I mean, I do subdivisions all over the state, and Waynesboro was always an anomaly with the really large streets, and this is just getting you in line with VDOT standards through there. So it's not a, you know, it is narrower than what's there, but it's still a 24-foot-wide VDOT street, which is the norm. And I think Mr. Jude had mentioned some reasons for it. I mean, I think stormwater, city maintenance costs. I mean, I think this is something the city also wants. It's not something just the developer wants.
There's a lot of reasons. We've discussed it and looked at it.
Right.
Why it's approved by VDOT, so.
Right.
All right. Anybody, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Maybe kind of a joint question for you and Mr. Jude about, has there been any kind of sort of discussion about that transitional element from the larger street width to the more narrow, so it's not as abrupt and sort of massaged, if you will, into the context of the, has there been a, or a willingness, I guess, to talk about that?
The new subdivision lots, which are the ones that are darker colored there, if you look to the ones to what I'm going to call the south, the bottom of the page, it's at a T-intersection. So the lot, the street width change there is not going to be against an existing lot. It's against the open space.
That's a good point.
There's not going to be any, the transition there will be not noticeable. It's not like one house is going from a big street to the other one. The way we propose to transition it on what I will call the northern section is to hold one existing right-of-way line, then taper it over two or three lots to get the reduced width. So, you know, it's not going to be a jump in the pavement width through there, but it's going to gradual change over, you know, 100, 150 feet or something to get through there. So will you notice it? Certainly. Is it abrupt? No.
I guess one of the elements for that change for Claybrook extended is if it were taken through those first five lots or six lots on the northern side to the T-intersection there, if you follow. Said if you did the, if we maintained the street width to that T-intersection?
And you mean the T-intersection all the way at the end?
Yeah.
But that's basically, what is that, a quarter of your road system? What are you accomplishing if you're wanting narrower street widths through there? Again, I think the transition is over enough distance. It's not going to be an abrupt change. It's going to be jumping out at somebody.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll hereby close the public hearing. Now, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance? And before that, is there any discussion we want to share amongst ourselves up here before we introduce? And I realize when you, if I'd have been a property owner moving in, when, you know, you had Phase One and you had Phase Two, with the expectations of what you think is going to come down the road when Phase Two starts. But I also realize from sitting up here and learning, as I have in the last nine years, we haven't made the changes in our ordinances overnight. When we've changed them in the past, we've had public hearings, we've had planning commission meetings, we've voted for it to us, we've had more public hearings on it, we've did as much research as possible, and then we voted on our decisions. And our decision, this ordinance was changed and the size lots was changed years ago. So when, and I feel what the community from the Phase One is saying to us, but by law, he has a right to develop this and to develop it by the code that we have put into law here in the city. And so it puts us in a really bad place when as many people come in here tonight and say, well, we'd like for you to hold off. That's just something that, I mean, I don't know if we could be sued because we're doing that because he's following the law. And these are things that have been studied, have been talked about, we're out in the community. It's nothing that was done behind closed doors or without discussion and being advertised in the newspapers. And I think we followed the rules that we have to in the legal steps that we've had to, to get to this point. And I can sit here and say I might not be happy if I was one of the owners in Phase One, and I might not like probably what I'm going to hear here tonight. But on the other hand, we have laws that we have to follow, and I'm just giving you my two cents on it. If somebody else would like to add something here, this is the time.
I think that Mayor Allen said exactly what needed to be said. We can feel exactly what the frustrations are. I can remember not long ago, a few years ago, another subdivision had a similar type issue where they had views that they no longer have. Again, you feel bad because things change, but that's, things change and they're legal. So even though we can feel the frustration from the community, we're sorry about that, but we have to follow the rules too.
Well, and, you know, when we talk about the width of the roads, you know, we've had public hearings on that, and we've had engineers in here telling us, you know, why we should go to the smaller width size, the difference in the cost of development, the difference in the cost of the maintenance, the difference in plowing. I mean, you have a wider road and it's extra cost of, the wider the road is, the more times a truck has to go through, which takes longer, so it takes longer for it to get throughout the whole community. There's a lot of parts of this equation that we've talked about, looked at, and thought about with every decision that we make. I rode with Mr. Hamp last week over and come through your development, looked at the Greenway, looked at, talked about some of the issues that had arisen that we thought the city had it and had been plotted to us it hadn't, and with y'all's commentary and discussed it all. I probably would not be happy if I was in Phase One. But I'm also, and, you know, I don't sit up here and make decisions based on my personal feelings. I have to base my decisions on the law and carry out the rights to protect everyone, and it would be just the same if it was reversed. So having said that, does anybody want to introduce?
Well, I'd add too, to kind of piggyback on what you've said, is that, again, as I understand it, we, if the lot could be vacated tomorrow and brought in as a new platid subdivision at 12,000 square feet, and there's not a thing the city could do about it, not a thing. So the exception here is whether or not we want to promote the type of softscape landscaped cross-section of a neighborhood that we envisioned as part of the comprehensive plan rewrite in 2008, and then the subsequent zoning redo in 2010. And I think, you know, I think staff would be working diligently, I would expect, and working with the owner to make those transitions as smooth as possible. But again, I think it's also sort of the, it's the context of where the market is and the adapting to the market. One of the questions, one of the points that I heard was, can we delay the vote to review and assess the type, size, quality, lot size, and home size as usual? Those are no, that's nothing that city council has purview over. We can't dictate that. That's dictated by our zoning ordinance and our building code. And so we, if we were to delay the vote, we'd probably be in trouble in order to do that. So, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Well, and, you know, we've had conversations with our city assessor and, you know, trying to see what kind of impact this might have on value of your homes as time goes, and there's smaller homes. And sure, I'm sure it's not, will be as easy as if you have the same-sized house and the same-sized lot. But, you know, talking with her, we didn't get a real negative reply from her, according, is that correct, Mr. Hamp?
So that's correct. The, Ms. Garris has furnished a memo, and I think essentially her message is that simply the plating of the subdivision in and of itself would not prompt the assessor's office to adjust the value of the lots and the, combined with improvements in the existing subdivision, that we cannot forecast or predict what the market might prove to be the case in the future. But simply plating the subdivision would not motivate them to adjust those values.
Okay.
Mr.? Well, I can understand, as has already been said here, that current owners in Phase One, you know, had expectations that the Phase Two would have the same lot size and street width. I don't really think the street width should really be that big an issue to anyone as long as it complies with the VDOT, if you understand that VDOT has certain requirements, certain maintenance costs are shared with the city based on street width. So I don't think the street is real issue. I think it's the lot size and, you know, what kind of homes will be on those lots. And as Mr. Short said, there's nothing that we really have a way of controlling that. It's dictated by the market, and the developer has, you know, a right to develop the property in accordance with law and market conditions. So I too understand some of the feeling that those in Phase One have, but I don't think we should, you know, we could hold off for any reason to not consider this developer's plan.
And the one thing that I would add, where we do have a responsibility, and we do have an obligation, is within our building code enforcement department. And, you know, shame on anybody that wants to come in and develop and not do the best job they can, and we don't want that. And I don't think Mr. Ledbetter is of that type. I've known him for some years, but I've never had him build anything for me. And so I would just say that, take a man at his word, that, you know, he's going to get in here and do the development the way it should be, but we'll also have our people there inspecting, and, you know, we're not perfect. Otherwise, the entrance sign wouldn't have been put in right-of-way. And I don't, you know, there's just an example of how things go afoul sometimes, even though you're supposed to be under the microscope and being watched to see that things are done within the law and to the letter of the law, and trying to make it the best we can. And that's what we're trying to do here. So, any other comments?
I think just on the, I was on the planning commission when we did the zoning ordinance rewrite, and I, and I think this is, this may be more of a product of unintended consequences if I don't think anybody imagined. We were thinking about, you know, new subdivisions come online, 12,000 minimum lot size, and certainly I don't think at that time we're contemplating such a change in market conditions either. So I would just say that. But that said, there's also a reason why it wasn't changed to something that would permit a much smaller lot size. You know, these aren't 5,000-square-foot lots. I mean, these are 12,000-square-foot lots. These are still very large lots comparable to many other subdivisions in the city. So just in context, that probably doesn't make folks feel a whole heck of a lot better, but just, I thought I'd just add, share that.
Thank you. So if we back up, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. All ordinances introduced this evening will be considered at the Augusta 28th meeting of city council. Item 4B is to conduct a public hearing to receive comment on proposed amendments to Chapter 74 subdivisions of the city code. Mr. Jude. Mr. Judee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Now that we've talked at length about the subdivision ordinance and the road standard changes, I can explain those. You've already seen this presentation, or most of it, or you've seen the longer version of it before, but wanted to go ahead and give most of the presentation again for the benefit of the public who may wish to speak during the public hearing. The subdivision ordinance again governs subdivisions, which is the division of any lot in the city into two or more lots. It governs the procedures, the design standards, and the public improvement requirements that we ask for whenever you want to divide a lot. Again, we have two types of subdivisions, major and minor, and under a major subdivision you have-
If you could just hold up one minute, please.
Sure, sure.
While he-
All right. For a major subdivision, that comes before you on council. That's any subdivision that's five or more, that's six or more lots now, and that involves any extension of public infrastructure. And again, they have a preliminary plat, which is what we were just debating just now, is the preliminary plat for Claybrook. And then once those public improvements are completed, when the street's in, when the sewer's in and everything, then they come to my office for a final plat. We verify that they did what the council asked them to do, and then they're allowed to build their houses. We're changing the document in quite a few ways. I've kind of split them into two types of changes. There's changes to the document that make it hopefully more accessible, more in line with the state code, easier to use, but they don't actually have a real impact on what gets built on the ground. And then there's changes to the regulations, changes that you will actually see the concrete results of when a subdivision gets built. For the document changes, we have a new table of contents. We have a new section for the period of validity of plats. We have quite a bit of confusion currently. We have a lot of old outstanding preliminary plats that developers are often wondering if they're still valid or not. We've also had quite a few sort of arbitrary extensions put in by the Virginia State Legislature that we've had to note as well. We have clearer procedures for major and minor subdivisions. We have completely clear procedures and standards for public improvements and surety, and some of this stuff is just bringing the subdivision ordinance in line with the practices as it is done now. And then we've also moved all our site cover requirements, all the landscaping requirements into the zoning ordinance, or rather, they're already in the zoning ordinance, and we felt that it was duplicative and in some cases contradictory to have them in the subdivision ordinance as well. The distinction that we've essentially made is that the zoning ordinance covers everything that's done on private property, what you're required to do on private property. The subdivision ordinance should cover everything that's required on public property. We've also removed the many mentions of "City Council may waive if." Again, I'll emphasize that City Council may waive the subdivision ordinance at any time. It may not waive the zoning ordinance, but it may waive the subdivision ordinance at any time. But putting "City Council may waive if" in certain statements in there was kind of an arbitrary statement, and it created an expectation of waivers that resulted in us not having sidewalks over a large part of the city and some other things. And we just felt that the subdivision ordinance should state what we want, and then if there's a hardship, they should come to you with a waiver. So that's, that's the way that we've, the mindset that we're approaching it with. For the regulatory changes, the changes that will actually result in something different being built, street design is the driving force behind this revision. It's both in terms of street width, layout, cul-de-sac length, street lights, sidewalks, and private streets. Currently, we have a minimum 36-foot width for all new streets in the city. You heard Mr. Ledbetter reference that we are the anomaly in the region and in many ways in the state in terms of how wide our roads are. We hear that from our developers all the time and how, what our minimum road width is. Kind of current planning practice is now to have much narrower streets, and the VDOT standards allow for much narrower streets as well, the smallest being 24-foot in certain residential areas. But that minimum varies based on the road types. You can't build a 24-foot arterial, you know, avenue down the middle of your city. We've, there are a number of reasons that you, we want to change the street width. The first is simple aesthetics and property values. I went out and took a picture of Oak Avenue, first looking north of Summit Square. This is only one block apart. This is our 30, standard 36-foot street section that we require. And then looking south of Summit Square, this is actually a 24-foot road that was built a long time ago under a different requirement. As you can see, the 24-foot allows for much better tree cover. It creates more softscape, as Mr. Short mentioned before. The 36-foot creates more of a kind of exposed feeling, and that's part of what makes a residential neighborhood feel less inviting. There's also a safety concern, especially in residential areas. The wider your road is and the wider your travel lanes are, the faster that cars naturally travel down it. When you have a narrower road, you can have straight roads and residential subdivisions, and still people will drive slower, especially when there are parched cars around there, and that results in fewer crashes and a safer environment for pedestrians. Especially important because if you get hit as a pedestrian by a car that's traveling at 25 mile an hour, you have probably 80, 90% chance of surviving. If you get hit by a car driving 35 or 40 miles an hour, you have maybe a, you know, 10 or 20% chance of surviving. So that, it really is important that our residential streets suggest to drivers, and not just have postings that we have to patrol, but suggest to drivers in the way that they're built, that they ought to be driving slower. The narrower streets also will reduce our cost of maintenance. Again, we receive VDOT maintenance money on a lane mile basis, so that you're looking here at two lane miles of road, two lanes of road that VDOT is compensating us for. Now, we have to pay 50% more road with that same amount of money. So reducing the road width results in the same lane mileage, but less square footage of pavement that we have to maintain. There's also a cost of construction for developers that they complain about, and that then goes into the cost of the homes later on. And then finally, that environmental cost, the flooding and stormwater issues, the more hard scape you have, as we hear constantly from the state legislature, the more runoff you're likely to have. And so it's important to reduce that as much as possible, and also reduces our burden in terms of meeting our MS4 requirements. Currently, we have our own standards written into the ordinance. As we went through this process, we, with our engineers and talking to developers, we realized that, look, our ability to research and keep up with planning trends just doesn't match VDOTs. And also, I don't want to be in front of you every five years to talk about revising the subdivision ordinance and our road width requirements. What we really care about is VDOT maintenance money and the research that they do to stay on top of the best practices. And so rather than changing our standards to match theirs, we're just going to reference their standards. We'll say that from now on, all roads constructed in the city of Waynesboro must meet VDOT standards. And we have a certain amount of flexibility as staff in ensuring that those conform to the specifics of the location as well. For layout, this is only sort of a macro change. It doesn't have a lot of regulatory teeth because it's just the, it's just the philosophy at the beginning. You know, you have kind of a statement of the goal and then the specific regulations. We want to change the statement of the goals to say that local streets should be laid out to conform as much as possible to the topography, to encourage energy conservation, to provide vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian interconnections within the subdivision and existing or future development on adjoining lands, to remove inefficient drainage and utility systems, and require the minimum number of streets necessary to provide for safe, convenient access to property. And the big change there is just saying that we want to provide for more interconnections. Because the private interest of developers and homeowners is usually to try to reduce connections as much as possible, but doing so reduces the efficiency of our entire road network, concentrates traffic on our arterials, makes it more expensive, and also makes it a less walkable and less erodes kind of our small-town feel. We also changed the ordinance to require sidewalks on both sides of all new streets. And again, we've removed the section that says "City Council may waive this if," which created an expectation of a waiver if there's no sidewalk next to you. And so what we have is, after a while, there's no sidewalk next to anybody, and so no one has to build sidewalks. So now we're simply requiring sidewalks on both sides of the street. We've also created an option for a shared use path in lieu of sidewalks. So it's an example on the new Berkmar extended in Charlottesville. They've built a shared use path along it, though they also have a sidewalk on the other side. But our ordinance would allow you, if you want to dedicate sort of basically a greenway next to the road, that would be a bicycle and pedestrian path, at least eight feet wide, and you wouldn't have to build your sidewalks. And then we also are just straightforwardly banning private streets. We've had a lot of discussion about private streets during the LAD school development, and the strong feeling of our Planning Commission and staff is that private streets are a maintenance and general political dispute waiting to happen, and it's better just to straightforwardly ban private streets. You can still have certain private accessways and commercial developments, but when you have 50 voters at the end of the street, it's not realistic for a developer to say to you, "You won't have to take care of this. You can do this, this, and this." They'll be in here asking you to accept the street and to take care of it. And most of the time, that's what we'll end up having to do. So I think that the safest thing is just to say, "No, if you're going to build a street in the city of Waynesboro, especially if it accesses residential areas, it needs to be built to VDOT standards, and ensure that we can receive maintenance money for it." And then some other substantive changes to the code include the ability to verify the current tax status of properties before it can be subdivided. So you can't have a tax lien against your property and then come in and subdivide it into two properties, because then you have brewing dispute between those two properties. Does the owner of the originally named lot have the tax lien on them, or is it the, you know, do they share the tax burden, or do you break it out by square footage? So we just say that in order to subdivide a lot, you need to have your taxes paid. And then we've also changed the amendments to approve preliminary plats. It was a little unclear before when an amendment to an approved preliminary plat had to come before council. You just saw an approved preliminary plat that the developer wanted to amend. And in previous eras, it was a little unclear when, if we could do that administratively or if that had to come to you. We're clarifying now that that could be done by us administratively if it doesn't increase the density or change substantially the layout of it. So if it address, if the modification to the, and we need that ability because oftentimes there's an approved preliminary plat, and, you know, there's a tiny change that happens. I mean, they have to put this tree over there, and you don't want to see that every single time and have a two-month process to deal with that. But we believe if there's an increase in density, like in this case, that's something neighbors care about. If there's a change to the road layout, again, that's something that people really care about. Or we said if it's a change to any element of the preliminary plat that was discussed during the approval process with council. And so basically, if they're, if they're changing anything that was controversial or that's significant, then it needs to come before you. So like in this case, increase in density, you need to see the amendment. And then we're also requiring public utilities for all lots less than 30,000 square feet. And previous to this, we had a sort of confusing, you know, if you are served by either sewer or water but not both, then you can have a certain minimum square footage, but it was actually double that because you had to have a drain field for your septic tank. We just clarified it, made it minimum 30,000 square feet. So you need to have almost naked a lot if you're going to have a septic tank. And we're getting to the point where in most parts of the city, it's really pretty environmentally destructive to have septic tanks at any greater density than that. And then finally, we're requiring that all public easements be recorded before private easements. This is so that once we approve a preliminary plat, the utility company can't rush in and get their easements approved before ours, so that then we have to constantly get their permission to work on the right of way. So we're requiring public easements to be recorded first. Again, we've, the staff has worked on the draft. We've gone through Planning Commission work sessions and discussion. We've gone through public review and comments from the Planning Commission, and then I gave this presentation at the last City Council meeting. And now we're at the formal public hearing and willing to take any input from council and hopefully move towards adoption if you all are in favor of it. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Judee?
I said, a couple of points I'd mentioned to you before about, on page 21 under sidewalks, about adding a condition of a minimum of a one-foot to three-foot, preferred three-foot sidewalk buffer. And I know you mentioned it was, maybe you can speak, speak to that, rather than having a sidewalk built on to the back of curb, which is fairly uninviting for the average pedestrian. But, so, making sure that we're, we're hitting a sidewalk buffer requirement on all elements of our code.
I definitely agree. And as I mentioned before, I think that's in our zoning ordinance. It really should be in our subdivision ordinance. I thought it was, but I'll verify that. And I totally agree. I think the, part of what creates a kind of rundown feel when you're walking down a street is the unbroken sort of parking lot pavement touching sidewalk pavement touching street pavement. You don't have any kind of break between them, and that's why it's important to have those curb strip buffers. And it also creates drainage that reduces your stormwater liability there.
Exactly. And then page 22, which is on multi-use paths, is that refers to the minimum width of eight feet. And so the ASHTO minimum width is actually 10 feet, and, but eight-foot is allowable under conditions where there's the expectation of a low pedestrian environment, which is probably in all these cases. So if we could add 10-foot desired and an eight-foot minimum-
Certainly, we can do that.
-I think that would just help communicate if there's an opportunity to get more than we could. On page 21 under E, just a small typo, where it's multi-use trials, it's to be trails. Then, I think that's all the comments that I had on it. Yeah, that's all.
Great. We'll address all those.
Anything else?
Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Judee. I'll hereby open the public hearing.
No one has signed up to speak at this public hearing, sir.
And I'll hereby close that public hearing. Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we introducing with the changes that Mr. Short suggested?
Oh, please, yes. As amended.
Yes.
We note two significant or substantive changes and one type of graphical error.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Item 5A is to consider adopting a resolution amending the Pelham Meadows subdivision agreement previously adopted by resolution of the City Council on January the 10th, 2005. Mr. Judee?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm earning my salary tonight.
Yes, sir.
This is a, kind of a complicated issue. I've tried to summarize it sufficiently in the staff memo there, but I'll, again, summarize it. The Pelham Meadows subdivision is located at the northern part of the Pelham neighborhood, just on the west side of the city. It basically encompasses Meadow Beauty Court up through La Grande Avenue and beyond. Here's the original plat that was approved in the late 90s, I believe in 1996. As you can see, all this is, has been constructed. This is La Grande Avenue right here, and this road dead ends now. So these 20 lots or so are currently existing development entitlement, but have still not been constructed. The most recent final plat, the most recent section that was completed was in 2004. And so we haven't had a whole lot of movement on this development after that, because the recession hit. Most of our developments went dormant for quite a while, including this one. Recently, the developer approached us about these five lots right up here and about, they've actually already put in all the utilities. These lots are pretty much there and good to go, and they just wanted to get a final plat for them and move ahead. And in the process, we discovered that they had outstanding obligations from previous phases, that public improvements that they had not completed and really probably shouldn't have gotten their certificates of occupancy, but we, due to, you know, oversight at the time, there's a lot of development activity happening. And again, the recession had hit, and so things had stalled for a little while. And we looked at whether they could complete those or they could be amended. And because the obligations in that case were very specifically worded and were part of an agreement that council entered into with the developer, we felt that staff didn't have the authority to modify that at all and that we needed to come before you. So the obligations in question are the final plat here for the, I believe, Section Four, or the Phase Four of the Pelham Meadows neighborhood. They received a sidewalk waiver, as was fairly common at the time, and in exchange, they offered to, the city asked them to construct a section of greenway. And originally, it was supposed to sort of loop around the stormwater pond, and then it was found that they couldn't do that because of a gas easement, back to my recording public easements before private easements issue. But so instead, this is what was agreed upon. It was about a 1,300-foot section of greenway behind these 11 houses that would just be a straight line, crushed stone gravel path. If you look at it now out there, you might say, "Where does that go?" And the answer is nowhere. At the time, it was, felt that it would go somewhere eventually. You know, it looked like the property next to it was about to develop, and we were going to be able to string together this kind of long train of them. But it wasn't, it wasn't totally clear then either. And so obviously, since then, that area's not developed, the greenway, and we've also felt that the north, northern connection through the city for the greenway will probably not follow this route, will probably connect at a different spot. So anyway, that final plat was approved with a sidewalk waiver December 13th of 2004 and modified to the currently standing agreement on January 10th of 2005. Here's a more detailed map. This is the, that Section Four that was built. So what was supposed to happen was this Lot 19 with the stormwater pond and the pump station was supposed to be dedicated to the city, to be maintained by the city. And this, this right here, these yellow dots, is where the greenway would be built along the backside of these houses, just across this little stormwater swale. Again, when they came forward wanting to have these new lots platted, we looked at it and said, "Well, they've not completed their public obligations from the previous phase, therefore staff cannot approve that." And so they came back and, you know, are going to D Lot 19 to us in accordance with that agreement. But they looked at the greenway and said, "Well, this doesn't make a whole lot of sense." Kind of give- kind of given the way that development has gone along in the 12 years since then. And staff looked at it as well and said, yeah, it doesn't make a ton, a ton of sense. And so they offered instead to pay the city the $8,000 maintenance agreement they had agreed to before, as well as a cash bond essentially in lieu of the greenway at the, which also amounts to about $8,000, so about $8,600. Again, we didn't feel as staff that we had the authority to amend it since it was a very tightly worded agreement that council entered into at the time. And so we've asked the lawyers to draw up a new resolution that we brought before you today. We also consulted the property owners in the region. We sent letters to all of the homes along La Grande Avenue and also received responses from a few of the homes that were across the way. The homeowners there all indicated that they would, would not like to have this greenway constructed along the backside of their homes and that they, again, did not feel that it would make a sensible contribution to the city's greenway system. And I have here and can distribute for your, for you to look at a petition that they've sent us with signatures of all the property owners on this side of La Grande and several other property owners as well. So staff recommendation, what we think the best move would be, would be to accept the offer that the developer has made and amend the agreement. We would amend the agreement so that that $8,000 maintenance money could be used for other maintenance on Lot 19, including the stormwater pond or other greenery improvements in that area. And then we would accept a certified check in lieu of construction for the greenway, which we would hold to be used later on a greenway connection to the Pelham area whenever it was sensible to do so. That payment would not cover city construction of a greenway. It's a fairly small amount, really, but it would be, you know, some contribution, and we feel it would sufficiently dispose developers' obligations so that we could release their lots. You can also direct staff to, yeah, so we'd like you to pass the resolution amending the previous agreement and then direct staff to accept that check rather than making the developer build the greenway as platted. I know it's kind of a complicated situation, but I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Any questions?
Goodness.
So would we retain the easement for the greenway section?
Yes, for now, we would retain the easement. And actually, we own outright about 60% of that easement, so it's not even a particularly useful easement to us. So we, yeah, we may look into giving up that easement later, but at this time, I would say we should hang on to it.
So the, so the portion that falls within the boundaries of Lot 19, that's dedicated, that's city right-of-way?
That will be dedicated to the city, yeah.
Is it possible to, rather than take in an easement for the, for the other 40%, but to, to look for a dedication of that right-of-way? The reason for being there is that the easement on and of itself doesn't really provide the city very much flexibility in relocating the greenway and that, you know, there, obviously there's not a whole lot of developable property up behind.
Right.
Those homes, but.
We could pursue that with the, with the developer. That would set us back a little ways. I personally don't feel that this is the best route for the greenway. I don't like to, it doesn't, this is headed out towards the county, so unless they had some kind of thing being extended, I don't personally know that that easement would be that useful in the future anyway, so.
I don't either, but I think that, but if, if the city owned the right-of-way, then as the, if Meadow Beauty were to punch through and a couple more lots to be built up behind there, we could transfer the ownership of our right-of-way to behind those homes and parallel the railroad.
That would be complicated. You're saying we could transfer the, move it over?
Mm-hmm. We could transfer ownership and so, but we basically could transfer, and maybe I am, maybe I am making it too convoluted, but it just, how can we require, how can we require the greenway to parallel the railroad otherwise in the future?
Again, this area hasn't, hasn't developed yet, so this is still all an open parcel. This, this section is supposed to be open space for more stormwater when, when the additional phase is built, if it ever is. Again, I don't see a lot of point to extending the greenway this far north. My hope would be eventually that we, the greenway comes from this direction and ties into the edge of a road rather than behind these homes. But again, I don't know how many years, decades out we are from that, but I'm not sure that would be worth holding up the process for personally. Anyone else?
I mean, right now, the, all the people there, they don't want the greenway.
Yeah, we received responses from all of the homes asking that we not build the greenway, yes. Which is what we expected, yeah.
And it's not really going to have much effect if, if they would ever start to develop again. Like you said, you got a greenway that's going nowhere.
Yeah, I, again, I, and I do want to say publicly so that no one feels betrayed, that I absolutely hope to extend the greenway and connect to the Pelham neighborhood eventually. And I think that's a critical part of our, our overall vision. I wouldn't do it quite this way, so I don't think that that, that this is a useful thing to have constructed right now. But yeah, I do hope eventually to, as more construction comes online or more money becomes available on our end, or we just kind of get to the, focusing on that area that, that we would find a way to tie to Pelham. But we have a lot of big obstacles to lift before that, the railroad being not the least of them, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or?
I might make the comment, Mr. Judee may help us with it, that this subdivision was platted prior to the city council's adoption of a citywide greenway plan, and which I think happened about 2000 or 2001. And if I'm not mistaken, the, the greenway plan proposes a different route connecting to the Pelham neighborhood.
It does.
And that does not contemplate the easement that we're discussing tonight.
Correct. Yeah, this is not a part of the city's approved greenway plan as it stands at the moment. Again, but that's, you know, when we, when we have sections of greenway that we're able to build, and sometimes we have to tweak that route, so it doesn't mean that it would never involve some kind of connection to Pelham Meadows. But yeah, current, the current greenway plan as it stands does not, this is not part of it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Have any other comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries favor. Item six is to receive a presentation from Nicole Nicholson, Director of Human Resources, regarding revisions to the city's grievance and military leave policies.
Good evening, Mayor Allen and members of council. Tonight, I'm here to inform you about two policies we've updated. This presentation is for informational purposes only. No action is required at this time. The first policy is the grievance policy. And so we've made revisions to this to maintain compliance with the Code of Virginia, which has been amended since the city's last review and update of this policy. We've also inserted clarifying language to aid in the administration of the policy. Specifically, we've removed referenced code sections that have been repealed. We amended the timeline for filing a grievance from 30 days to 20 days to align with the Code of Virginia requirement of 20 days. We've clarified procedures for panel selection and hearings to comply with the code. The second policy is the military leave policy. The city's policy has been revised to comply with the relevant federal regulation and the Code of Virginia and to provide clarifying language to aid in the administration of the policy. Specifically, we've restated the paid leave allotment from 120 hours of paid military leave within the federal fiscal year to 15 workdays of paid military leave within the federal fiscal year. Second, language was added to clarify the different types of military leave, for example, temporary versus extended. And thirdly, language was added to improve guidance on the reemployment process. And I will stay here with, if you have any questions.
I think I had had some discussion in reference to the 15 days. Is there any clarification? I think like if there's 15 days from a person that works like at the library as opposed to 15 days of police officer or fireman?
Mm-hmm. That's exactly right. And that's why the code is written 15 workdays versus kind of channeling into 120 hours because it is going to have.
It's just a total 120 hours and regardless of what your workdays are.
No, it actually goes to the workdays. And so that is actually why we needed to change it from 120 hours to the 15 workdays because it will depend on if you're working different shifts. So it will be different for a firefighter and a police officer and someone that works at the library.
I think I got an answer to my question.
So it's based on the, not to restate it, but it's based on the status of the employee. So for example, in our organization, our firefighters work 24-hour shifts as opposed to our police officers who work 11 and a half to 12-hour shifts as opposed to a library employee who works in most cases, as do many other employees, an eight-hour day, which translates into a 40-hour week. We were improperly administering the law when we were applying that 40-hour work week to some of those other public safety personnel who were on military leave.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6B is to receive a presentation by Captain Mike Martin on the work and accomplishments of the Skyline Drug Task Force.
While he's pulling that up, I'll get started. About a year ago, a police chief had enough foresight to request that we be afforded an opportunity to build a regional drug enforcement team. I have a quick report this evening. I want to thank you in advance for the opportunity and your foresight in affording us the chance to, to build this very formidable team. And I want to show you some of the results we've got. The, this is a quick agenda, 14 slides, so I'll be quick. The Skyline Drug Task Force composition is represented by the very patches you see there on that slide. It's Stanton, Waynesboro, Augusta, Nelson, and the Virginia State Police. That's the formal agreement. We also partner very closely with Homeland Security Immigration and the U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency. We routinely have someone in our office a couple of days a week. Talk about our strategy. We could, we could talk for days if we covered all the drugs, but I'll show you our statistics and explain why. We're just going, we just have time tonight. We're going to talk about the methamphetamine problem. Talk about economic impact and the way forward. This is the, this depicts the key tenets of our counter-narcotics strategy. I'm not going to go over each and every one, but I want to point out just a couple for you. The first one there is probably the most important. Several years ago, the chief and the command staff sat down and talked about what our, what the biggest emerging threat was, and by far it was methamphetamine. And in return, we've really laid the foundation for a more effective patrol division. We do a whole lot more criminal interdiction now than we do writing tickets. To date, I think the chief has sent about three-quarters of our force to criminal interdiction school, and the statistics clearly show that that's, that's a big win. We, our numbers for felony arrests are almost twice that of similar-sized jurisdictions. And the second bullet comment, our methamphetamine problem, there's no way around it, has its roots in criminal illegal aliens and Mexican cartels. Two years ago, you probably saw a methamphetamine lab or one of the little shake-and-bake labs in the paper every week, if not two or three times a week. You don't see those today. And that's because very cheap, very powerful methamphetamine is making its way into our culture from, from, from Mexico. And I won't go through the, the rest, but I'll, I'll give you some statistics that show that bear that out. All right, this is just in our first year. We started in late September of last year. As you can see, we've done 120 search warrants. We've made 261 felony arrests, seized 18 cars, 65 guns, and over a quarter million dollars in cash. We've seized, in methamphetamine alone, we've seized $1,349,000 worth of methamphetamine. Our second worst drug is cocaine. And that, again, as you can see, that's only 10% of what our meth problem is. And then our third is heroin, which again is 10% of that. So by and large, 95% of our fight is methamphetamine. On the right, you'll see our very own Detective Jesse Shaver with Barclay. That particular seizure was one of the largest in central Virginia history. We affected that arrest almost two months into the formation of the task force, and that just illustrates the kind, that's three-quarters of a million dollars in methamphetamine and a kilo of cocaine there. So that just shows you the kind of, that this strategy is working, this collective targeting and working as a unit. So we talk a lot about the, the housing bubble, the economic bubble, you know, the tech bubble. Well, this is a meth bubble, and it's more destructive than all those combined. That's a small glass pipe, the ubiquitous meth bubble, as it's called in the meth trade, that really every breath that's being taken through that is sapping our strength and our local economy, and it's ruining our citizenry. The, just to illustrate the scope of the problem, I want three slides that's a crash course on the scope of this problem. So if you take a regular packet of Splenda or, you know, whatever your sweetener is, that's one gram. On the local economy, one gram of methamphetamine is approximately $100. That's the going rate. A slice of bread is an ounce, and locally, it's about $1,500. And then a 16-ounce bottle there represent roughly what one pound of methamphetamine would yield. And if you buy that wholesale here, it's about $20,000 a pound. So if you follow the math, this is, this illustrates why it's such a lucrative business. You can buy one pound of meth in Mexico for about $1,000 to $2,000. One pound of meth, if you wholesale it in Virginia, is $20,000, which means you've already made 10 times your money if you simply bring a pound here and sell it and traffic it. If you sell it by the ounce, the ounce is roughly 1,500 to 2,000, and by the gram, it's 100. But if you take one pound of methamphetamine across the border and break it here and sell it by the gram, you'll know that 28 grams in an ounce, $2,800 an ounce, and 16 ounces is one pound, your net profit is $44,800 per pound. That's the root of, that's the root and the scope of our problem. What that means is, that's an ounce there. That means that, I think, gold closed today at about 1,400. That means that methamphetamine is literally more valuable than gold. And here's the one slide, I hope that you can take away the impact and the actual scope. So methamphetamine, most of ours comes from the Sinaloa cartel. This is just one of the routes it takes till it hits Virginia. They sell it wholesale, and then almost probably 89% of the time, local dealers will wire the money, the bulk money, back to Mexico. I looked up the average salary on payscale.com for Waynesboro. It's $39,006 per person, which means that every pound of meth that crosses the border and lands in Waynesboro and is sold and used here drains more than the average annual salary of one person, every pound. And that's, and that's not including the exponential impact, such as the, we're talking about the purity, okay? 10 years ago, the methamphetamine that we were getting from these labs and locally made was probably 30, 40, 50%. We just recently got back the very first in the nation from the DEA lab in Rona, gave us the very first lab result where we bought an ounce of 100% pure methamphetamine. Now, here's what that means. Folks that started using 10, 20 years ago, using 20, 30, 40%, they had an, they had a, there was a slim chance they could shake this habit. The folks that are starting out today on 100% pure meth, they're doomed. They're absolutely doomed. The, there's also the exponential crimes associated with this, the larcenies, you know, the robberies, the rapes, all the things that go along with, with drug use. Because not everyone that's spending 40-some thousand dollars a year on meth is making 40-some thousand. Most of them are unemployed and have to steal or sell to perpetuate, you know, the crime. And then we'll talk about the next generation. I can, I can tell you horror stories of no less than five or six, you know, pregnant women that we've seen just this year who are currently using while they're pregnant. And I know we recently met and had a meeting with the school board and talked about what they're starting to see with this next generation and the societal impacts in the schools. But these folks are creating an entire generation of children that are addicted from womb to tomb. They're going to be impacted, and we're going to be dealing with them for the next, you know, 50, 60, 70 years. Just a couple of quick success stories. This particular organization on King Avenue, we caught them with a pound of methamphetamine and $43,000. Testimony about this case shows that they were in the 300 to 400-pound-a-year range. This organization, we caught. This organization, we caught them with only two pounds, but we missed, there was trafficking it in tires. We missed like eight pounds, I think. It was just a big pile of tires. And the testimony in this case, over a ton a year. And this just shows, this is a small-time dealer, but it shows what it looked, what it turns the face of our public into. It's a hotel room, assault weapons, knives, pistols, stolen guns, stolen cars, and they're just dealing at the ounce level. This is every week. This is not a big event. I mean, this, I use the ones from 16 because they have the most colorful pictures. This is every single week. So the way forward, the good news is that definitely getting your money's worth out of the task force. We went from two guys dedicated to working drugs to a 13-man task force, not to mention the outside agencies that assist us. We have statewide authority, we're sworn with state police powers, and it's allowed us to reach outside, you know, the borders of Waynesboro and impact those folks that are impacting us from outside our jurisdiction and bring them to justice. And we just started the reported drug dealer online program. There was a, supposed to be a press release today. It was canceled because of the things over in Charlottesville. That is going to get the community involved and allow them a venue where they can send us tips anonymously about drug dealers. This has been online for about a year as a Waynesboro initiative. Only Waynesboro had the hyperlink. Now it's going all five jurisdictions. Community partnerships, we've made some good progress through GAP. We've had some meetings with school leaders, church leaders. We did our first community forum, and we're making a lot of headway on just situational awareness and getting the public behind us. And the last, the last talking point I'll talk about, I'll tell you a story. We just lost a young man who was here for two years, grew up here. He just won our Employee of the Year, and he won our first GLADIUS Award, which is for the cop that goes out and does the most criminal interdiction. And two months later, we lost him, you know, to the county for a couple thousand dollars. So, you know, if anything, if I would ask from you is to always, you know, keep that in mind, these, you know, these young men and women. These guys that are on patrol, these guys and gals, you know, working drug work is like shooting fish in a barrel. But these guys that are out there every day, you know, they're the absolute champions. And, you know, I ask that you consider that, consider what they're going through, because all those guns and drugs and things that you see, they're seeing them out there now too, and they're the first line of defense. Okay, any questions?
How much does it cost to run the force every year, or cost us?
So we, we've just added another employee to the task force, the K-9 officer. So now we have myself, two K-9s, and a detective. So we put the bill for four positions, and I'll let the chief speak to, I think we covered the electricity, and I don't know what the actual number is, but in return, we get 10 or 11 other officers, and we're leveraging all that manpower here in our local jurisdiction because it's here. So I can't give you an exact estimate on the cost, but I can tell you the reward far surpasses what we invest in. I work drugs in, I've been here 24 years. In the mid-'90s, I worked the crack epidemic. And we indicted 19 folks federally, and they all got 20 years or more, and we literally only had four ounces of drugs on the table. We're finding that in one, you know, one arrest now. The scope is so, so much larger.
Mike, is some of the, how much of the money that's seized or vehicles or whatever come back to us? I mean, is there, some of that come?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have a share agreement. I believe it's proportioned by membership. The Commonwealth Attorney's Office of their respective jurisdiction gets 10%, and then the rest of it is meted out amongst the other members, so divided by five. So a quarter million would be probably around 50 or something like that.
I think there's no doubt. Thank you so much for presenting. I think it's wonderful information. I remember the session that you all did at the launch last year with high school, which was great. I would encourage you to do more of those. It sat on a VML Committee for Human Development and Education a couple weeks ago, and one of the sessions was on this very issue, opioid addiction and so on. And that, I think I remember the quote, it might have been you that said that last year, that, you know, this isn't something that we can arrest our way out of.
Right.
And that line stuck with me. And so I would, I know I plan, I think we should all maybe have those conversations with our legislator in Richmond, legislators in Richmond about what sort of assistance they could provide in terms of trying to address this from a behavioral standpoint too. The, there's the addiction element, the access element, you know, this isn't just Waynesboro.
Yes, sir.
And so if we, I think this is just a fantastic example of the hard work that you all are doing and our partners throughout the region, and a shining example of how we're working really, really hard to turn the corner on an epidemic that's not only obviously impacting Waynesboro, but the whole country. And so very much applaud the presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, all I can say, I've known you for a lot of years. I know the job that you do for us, and, you know, you make us proud, and I know it's a dangerous job, and I don't see the light at the end of the tunnel. That's what bothers me more than anything else, and I understand your concerns, and you do have our support.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes I know you might not feel like you do. You do. And I thank you and your team for what you all do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Item 6C is to receive information from Deputy City Manager Jim Shaw on the city's various fund balances and reserves. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've provided you a summary of committed fund balance, restricted fund balance, and retained earnings and the enterprise funds. And just as a quick reminder that in the general fund, that is tax-supported fund primarily, that the fund balance or fund balance is a system of accounting that segregates the city's assets and according to essentially their spendability, and so that you have non-spendable fund balance, which are things like inventory, the corpus of a trust, in our case, the perpetual care fund, for instance, at the cemetery, where we're only allowed to spend the interest earnings on the perpetual care fund. You have restricted fund balance, which I've provided, and those amounts are constrained by, for specific purposes by their providers. And in most cases, that are, those are either state or federal funds, grant funds, donations that come with strings attached, bequests and wills and that sort of thing. Committed fund balance, which are constrained by use by the governing body themselves. So if you look at committed fund balance, those funds can only be spent by your appropriation, either through the budget process or by special appropriation. Fund, assigned fund balance, which are amounts that the government intends for a specific purpose, and that purpose is expressed by the governing body, and those tend to be, again, funds that are signed during the budget process. Then there's the unassigned fund balance. Now, unassigned fund balance, assigned fund balance, and committed fund balance are all considered unrestricted funds, and that is that those funds can be spent at the will and discretion of the council. Retained earnings apply to the enterprise funds. There are some fundamental differences in accounting practices and systems that are used in the general fund and those in the enterprise fund that primarily have to do with when we recognize the receipt of revenues and when we recognize expenditures. I would provide a couple of caveats with the report. One is the, the report is dated July the 20th. That really isn't, doesn't reflect an accurate accrual period for the accounts. And by that I mean that the fiscal year ends on June 30th. The accrual period for the fiscal year, we're currently in fiscal year 18, so the fiscal year that ended on June 30th has an accrual period that will last until tomorrow. And what that means is that we continue to receive revenues and we continue to pay bills that are naturally and appropriately placed in the previous fiscal year. And so we'll close your accrual period tomorrow, and then over a period of weeks, we go through a process of essentially doing posting and journaling to close out the fiscal year. By the time we close our fiscal year, the auditors arrive and review our books to ensure that they've been accurately stated. And so in the case especially of retained earnings and restricted fund balances, I would expect that some of these numbers will change because of either the annual postings or certain things that we reconcile at the end of the year, especially true of retained earnings. And then there are also expenditures that will still be posted, especially against restricted funds. I might suggest that the council focus attention especially on committed fund balance, because these are the reserves that you most frequently access for projects that the staff identifies or that the council identifies as necessary. And you're familiar through the budgeting process with the use, for instance, of either governmental equipment replacement, that's primarily for vehicles and heavy equipment, governmental facility maintenance. Those are funds that are most often used during the budgeting process. For some time, we built a technology reserve in anticipation of replacing our central computer system. We've continued to use that technology reserve also for other capital items in the IT area. The city has established a school debt reserve in this fiscal year. You've also been setting aside money that, for industrial park development, and that fund will continue to grow. And then as well, in this past year, fiscal year 17, the council established an undesignated capital projects fund. I would say that, you know, again, these are the funds that are most available to the council's use. They only change at the council's direction. Having said that, you know, certainly we identify and encourage the council to make prudent use of the funds. You could, at your discretion, liquidate one fund and devote the money entirely to another fund. Again, we would encourage the council to be mindful of those looming expenditures for which the funds were originally established. With that having been said, I'm glad to answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions?
No, I appreciate the summary. If we could, I know it's already posted online relative to the, to the agenda and such, but to post that independent, and then if we could provide a meta-text or a brief summary of examples of the types of expenditures that councils current and past have used to disperse those funds in those relative committed fund categories, that would be, I think, helpful and informative to those, just kind of, it's like, what is, what is this ACSA landfill capital? What could you spend that on? You know, so people have just a general idea. I think that'd be helpful.
Okay. We'd be glad to do that.
Anything else? Item 7A is to consider reappointing an individual to the Library Board of Trustees for a four-year term ending August the 31st, 2021. Mr. Hamp?
Ms. Brenda Moore currently serves on the Library Board of Trustees. She expresses a willingness to continue service on that board, and her reappointment is presented for your consideration this evening.
Is there a motion to reappoint Ms. Brenda Moore?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Is there a second?
Sam?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there any other discussion? If not all in favor of the reappointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Item 7B is to consider reappointing two members to the Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board, each for a four-year term ending August the 31st, 2001. Mr. Hamp?
These members are Mr. Garnett Weatherholtz and Mr. Spencer Cross.
Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Weatherholtz and Mr. Cross?
Some move.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson is our second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Communications and correspondence.
Mayor Allen and members of council, I would like to introduce this evening Ms. Melissa Michelson. She is with the law firm of Litten and Syke, and the firm has been selected to furnish legal counsel. Ms. Michelson will be the lead, contact lead attorney for that engagement.
Welcome, and it's a good night to be here.
Yeah.
Look forward to working with you. Anything else, Mr. Hamp?
Not this evening, sir.
Number 10, citizen's comment, period. She'll state your name and address, please, Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes, I will. Good evening. My name is Jeanne McCutcheon, and I live at 1922 East Main Street, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Perker. Do you all understand what that is? Port Republic Road Historic and Community Association. At the last meeting, I was here, and Mr. Allen, you referred me to the chief to speak to him on some issues that I had some concern on, and I did so. And he did also say to me that he would take care of those, but the bridge need to be fixed because it is causing, I think, the police department some problems. There were three incidents that almost turned into road rage on the Port Republic Road with people refusing to back up or move because we're all on the same lane. I told you before, going down, that is the right way, coming up, they're on the wrong way, and people assisting to stay in their position. Sometimes they're not willing, and you know how they are today. Also at the apartment at 260 Port Republic Road, I told you before, they're doing a lot of building, and it seems that they have that apartment filled to capacity. There's nine vehicles that we can see. And I went down to the assessment office to look to see if there could possibly be a parking lot or something put at this apartment complex that help, would help alleviate some of the traffic that is parked on that road from that building all the way to a mending The other concern that I have also is about the bridge. And I have a question. What happens if any of that bridge would collapse on a train going through there? And the train still vibrates even though traffic don't go over it. They, it still vibrates that bridge. If the bridge would collapse, any part of it, we could have a derailment. Somebody could be killed. That's in addition to the safety issues I've already told you about. What about the snow, the plowing there on the Port Republic Road with 11 or 10 feet width? You know, where's the snow going to go? That's another concern. The other concern is, the other day, I was going to go into the Willamore, coming out, excuse me, I won't name the company, of this truck who was going to deliver something up Portland, up Florence, excuse me, found out he couldn't do it, so he decided to come down where it says do not enter, where we can, we are coming out. So people are just going anywhere and everywhere, and eventually we're going to have an accident. Now we have another problem. The school bus is coming. That's an issue. And just the other day, the rescue was coming up that street. Thank God I was able to turn into my drive to get out of way, and no other cars were coming on the road. I would like for you to please look about what's going on and help us in that area. We need it, and we need you all to do something because, because people are complaining to us. The bridge needs to be fixed. Thank you.
We'll go fix it. Anybody else?
No, sir.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Adjourn.